If everyone wants to get seated or with the rest of council, please hopefully come up. If you want to, you can rise. I'm waiting for any stragglers.
Just Tara.
Just Tara. All right, call the meeting to order. Mr. Kruze has a pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Ms. Zomba, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kruze.
Present.
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Hackman.
Here.
Mr. La.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Happen.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present, Mrs. Ferraro by phone.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes September 19th?
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
On favor.
Aye.
Am I opposed? All right. Now, we're going to have a presentation by the Historical Society. And Megan Van Ravensway is here, and she's going to give us a brief presentation.
Good evening, council members. Unfortunately, Megan could not join us tonight. My name is Carrie Birbel. I'm the Director of the Historical Society, but I've brought the star of the show this evening. This is our curator, Brittany Mariam. Most of you will remember, I was actually here in the summer with Megan. I spoke to most of you about some of the work that we're doing in the county as the county's history museum. And one of the state tuned moments that I mentioned was actually our upcoming destination, Northampton County, permanent exhibition, which is going to be opening in November. It's an exhibition that we've been working on for almost three years at this point. Brittany will explain a little bit why. It's a genuine community exhibition. The county has given us $30,000 over the past two years in hotel tax money to do it. And what I'd like to do is just formally extend an invitation to all of you. Our VIP opening is on November 1st. You'll all be getting invitations in the mail if you haven't gotten them already. But one of the really special things about the VIP opening is that we will be having some of the community ambassadors who have worked with us to reach out to different parts of the community to help us collect people's stories and artifacts. We'll be there and we'll be honoring them. So we hope you can join us. If not, we'll also have a grand opening day on November 8th, which is a Saturday night. Excuse me. Sorry, folks, we're preparing for a fundraiser tomorrow. It's going to be on the 9th. It will be all day, free to the public, filled with all kinds of family activities, stories from all over the county and people from all walks of life. But I would like to introduce Brittany to you. She'll tell you briefly about the show and what's coming up and what you can look forward to. Thank you.
Well, hi, good evening. I just want to thank the county again for supplying funds to make this exhibition happen. We're very, very excited. This has been three years in the making, certainly a passion project for myself. But if you know a little bit about the Historical Society's history, we incorporated in 1906. We've been around a very, very long time. And over the past 115 almost years, we've been collecting stories and artifacts in that time. Many, many artifacts. And we do that very well. We tell stories very well, certainly the revolutionary history of the county, Moravian history. I mean, we can go on and on and on about the history of the county, right? However, when we came into some exhibit space, when we had space in the downstairs, lower level, come available in the Siegel Museum, we actually reached out to the county, members of the county, and asked them what they would like to see in their county museum. As opposed to me saying, let's put in whatever that we wanted to see. And overwhelmingly, those who responded to our survey wanted to see stories about immigration and diversity. Number three was trains. And wow, everybody loves trains. We thought perpetuating and showing more stories about immigration and diversity would be something incredible to do. So as we just, you know, looked into what our collection had and the stories we had, we realized there was a huge problem. We actually didn't have a lot of stories that weren't about the African-American community, about the Lebanese-American community, about the Filipino-American community, and so on. We do a lot very well at the Historical Society, talking about the Palatine-German history, the Pennsylvania-Dutch, Irish-Americans. You see where I'm going. So what we've been doing the past three years is something we're very proud of. It's sort of on the pulse of what's going on in the museum community at large. We have dedicated these past three years to connecting with our county again. I want to remind the county council that the Historical Society's mission, our new mission actually, is to share the stories of Northampton County's past, to encourage personal reflection, community dialogue, and an understanding of history's impact on our lives. So that's what we've been doing. We've connected with the NAACP. We've made new connections with different community members who have helped uncover the stories that we didn't have. So now, on November 1st and November 9th, we will be showing our community what we have done. So you might, as you come down to the lower level on our elevator, you will walk into a dockside from Philadelphia reminiscent of one that, if you were an immigrant, you might have come to with the sounds and smells of what that dockside might have looked and felt like. It is child-friendly, family-friendly. You will also get to experience what it might have been like inside a Lebanese-American home in Lebanese town. You'll also get to experience what the black barber shop is like. And while they're so important for African-Americans in the community, as well as stories, plenty of stories from folks from South Side Bethlehem, South Side Easton, and more. So we're very excited. We welcome you all to our opening. And there's plenty more where that came from. This is only the beginning. So we welcome you, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I just have one.
Go ahead.
I remember last time I asked a question about the Windish. And I was on the South Side of Bethlehem the other day, and I noticed the Windish Social Hall is now St. Luke's. And it kind of broke my heart a little bit. So I think what you're doing is very important in preserving what cultures did come and that heritage. And I hope you were able to get in touch with Ron Harry. To get in touch with people, I would say very quickly, this has also been an exercise in diplomacy. I mean, the people who are working with us are so enthusiastic, we wish we could give over the whole museum to everybody.
Totally, yeah.
But what we're telling everyone and reminding everyone is this truly is just the beginning. So if someone walks in, we are thrilled to be able to say that if you have come to this county in the past 50 to 75 years, you might actually be able to see your story or yourself reflected in this museum as opposed to just history that's 100 years old. But what we really need to continue to do is to develop trust in these communities. Because we have people who are working with us who might be reluctant to give up some of their family heirlooms or some of their photographs. But so the more we're able to reach out to people, the more we're able to bring everyone's stories in the museums and show them really that this is their museum and they should not be put off by it. And it's a place where we can all come together to connect. So I would also just put out the word to everyone here, if you know of anyone or if you know people who are looking to share their stories, we're open to them and we welcome them to come in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we have another question.
At one time, a significant issue here dealt with the Bachmann House. Can you give us an update as to, you know, what's going on there and what the status of it is?
If you haven't seen it lately, it looks gorgeous. We have all-new windows and shutters as of last year. The county also helped fund that as well. The Bachmann House has been used, obviously, for school programs for years. There's always an issue of, you have these historic houses, and what do you do to make them viable, not only financially, but mission-wise? And we're really fortunate that the Bachmann House, while it is not open every weekend or every day of the week, because we found we can't sustain that, we don't have enough people coming in, we hold up to about 30 programs there a year. We do specialty programs. We reach out to different members of the community. It might be everything from a colonial workshop that you would expect, to a tavernite, to a trivia night, to school groups coming in. It's, one of our goals is to make these buildings live and much more vibrant in today's world. So we are working on restoring the outside because that's an incredible part of the upkeep, but it's something that we continue to work on, and I'll let Brittany talk about it a little bit more as well. But we're always striving to make these buildings more vibrant and accessible to the public.
Yeah, and in terms of interpretation, we are working on two major things right now. So in the George Taylor Room, we actually are working on a dressing the bed program. And what that is, is at the Betsy Ross House, it's actually where I used to be quite a while ago. One of the biggest programs we did there was a dressing the bed project. And so we had some of the interpreters who were versed in 18th century sewing and upholstery actually put together the bed in terms of the bed dressings and the curtains and everything. So we're doing that project with help from our friends at the Betsy Ross House with George Taylor's bed. So George Taylor's bedroom will actually be brought back to life as how his bed chambers looked in the 18th century, in the late 18th century. So that will be up probably in mid-2020. We also recently, not about a year ago, put up Valentine's store. In the mid-19th century, Valentine, who was a Scottish immigrant, actually had a dry goods store in the Bachmann Public House, so we brought that back to life in one of the smaller rooms of the Bachmann House. So it's actually hands-on. Kids in their school groups can come and actually with a guide, learn about commerce in the 19th century, everything from credit to what would you have in a dry goods store and a grocery store. So we're trying slowly to bring these rooms back to life from different centuries because the Bachmann's been here a very long time. It hasn't always been a pub. It became a lot of different things. Everything from a dry goods store to a French confectioner had a business there as well. So we're slowly reviving it and interpreting it with different exhibits that are hands-on and kid-friendly. So that's what we're doing at the Bachmann.
Any other questions? I just, maybe one day, council can have another meeting. We did that in the past at the Bachmann House. And I guess this time you wouldn't need candles. I think the last time it was done, they...
We have battery-operated candles, but some other fun things that are going on. Easton is having a book festival at the end of October.
Yes, they are.
So that's open for events and panels and things like that. The council's welcome to come back and join us.
Yeah.
We fit about 30 people in there, so you're fine.
Maybe one day, we'll go down there and have a meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to Courtesy of the Floor. And I have Roger Dreisbach Williamson, if you would like to come up and just repeat your name for clerk.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Roger Dreisbach Williams, citizen living in Williams Township. I've begun attending meetings here because I find this group to be one of integrity, intelligence. And I was here some time ago, and you received a presentation on the Infrastructure Bank. And if I recall correctly, this body endorsed the proposal. I thought about that presentation, and I'm here to ask that you put it aside a little bit, back off a little bit. The reality is that everything that the infrastructure needs to be done, can be done, with existing federal programs. And the idea that somehow you were going to create this wonderful thing that would be outside of politics, anytime you are spending someone else's money, there will be politics. That's human nature, and I'm sure you are all familiar with that. So the idea that we can have this somehow above, no. Also, some of these projects are going to fail, and those costs will have to be covered. So I plead, I ask you simply to back off a little bit and think about it. The examples that were presented where it's been done in the past all predate the establishment of the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve recently prevented this country from falling into a very serious financial depression. And in the end of that day, the Federal Reserve ended up making more money on it than they spent. We are in a similar position with our infrastructure. And I believe that with a commitment on the part of the federal government to use its tools, the federal, the infrastructure problem can be solved effectively as much as possible. Not every proposal will be approved, and some people are going to be upset. But that's the nature of the political process. But I do not believe that creating an infrastructure bank is the best way of solving the problem, the most efficient way of solving the problem, or the least expensive way of problem in terms of the taxpayers and the citizens of this country. Please consider it further. I'm certainly open to discuss. You received a more in-depth presentation than I did. I fully honor that, respect that, but I just, things are not adding up properly. And as a citizen, I'm here to share this concern with you.
Would you like a more in-depth presentation?
I'm sorry?
Would you like a more in-depth presentation? Would you like more information on it?
I'd be very happy to talk with any of you.
I'd be happy to give you more information on that at any point in time. I think you have my contact information.
I will get...
You can reach out to me.
Yeah, definitely. I will be very, I'd be delighted to get any information that any of you can provide. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. All right, next, we have Mr. James Irwin. You repeat your name for the clerk, you have five minutes.
James Irwin from Lower Nazareth. I'm also the president of Lehigh Valley Labor Council and a staff rep at App State District Council 88. I'm here today to talk about a resolution that you're going to be talking about, the Jake Schwab Worker Safety, to urge the House to take action and make sure that public sector workers have the same protections as private sector workers here in Pennsylvania. They do not, they're not protected by OSHA. They should be, they should be afforded the same rights as everyone else. While PNDOT is not a county function, they are your constituents. They're out there on the road, and the best way that I can explain this is, you have PNDOT workers working out on 22 on the eastbound. Commonwealth subcontracts out work to a private company to do work on the westbound, a couple miles down the street. Those workers are covered by OSHA, and our PNDOT workers here in Pennsylvania are not. They do not have the same protection. So I would, you know, urge you guys to support that resolution, to put pressure on the House. This isn't something new. This is something that's been around for years. For the last four years that that bill has been out, has not made it out of committee. Makes it out of committee, it will most definitely pass, we believe. So again, the only question I hear back when talking to legislators in Harrisburg is how much is it going to cost? So if you were going to ask that question, I will tell you that it's a simple answer, and that's what's the cost of someone's life? Because that's what we're talking about. These people go to work every day, are public sector workers, so they serve the public, and they deserve to have the same rights, and they deserve to come home every single day. So thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Judge Paula Rossioli. And if you could just format.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here this evening. I'd like to introduce you to Christine Sales, and we have our Director of Domestic Relations, Lisa Yanni-Vicelemine here. One of my duties in the court is to be the administrative judge of domestic relations. And recently, I was advised that one of our longstanding employees, Christine Sales, who has been with us for 35 years, was the recipient of a statewide recognition in support of her good work that she has been doing. It's not always easy to work in domestic relations anywhere because you are dealing with people in the most difficult times of their lives. And so when we have an employee that has not only been with us for 35 years, but is someone who is recognized across the state for their excellence in what they do, we felt very, very proud. So thank you to our county executive, because I reached out to him to let him know that, and he's the one that thought it would be a great idea to be able to come here and recognize her. So I'll turn it over to him for the proclamation.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge Rossioli. It's very nice to see you here tonight, and thank you for bringing this to us. And it is nice to be able to bring our long-term employees, who are award winners, in front of their governing body and be recognized. This is a wonderful award. It's the Mary Kunkel Award of Excellence, is that right? And so, there's a lot of great stuff about you in here. I can read it all if you want me to, or I've got, you know, okay. Well, this proclamation says you're great, okay? There's several wherethes, and it all ends with you're great, all right? But now, but now, now let me do the now where therefore. Now therefore do I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, recognizing and congratulate Christine Sales for receiving the 2019 Mary Kunkel Award of Excellence and thank her for commitment and devotion to Northampton County. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
If you want to go have your picture taken with... Stay there and get some of your glory.
Yes, by all means. Sure, it's for the archives, future generations, whatnot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you very much. All right, that was all. Those were all the names signed on the meeting for Courtesy of the Floor. Is there anyone out there who would like to speak to council on any matter? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the county executive report, if he has one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This was a letter received by Stephen J. Barron, Junior Director of Fiscal Affairs. It was dated September 30th, 2019. Dear Steve, this letter is my official notification to you and the administration that my last day of work at Northampton County will be November 1st. On the next day, I plan to retire. I am excited about my impending retirement. I have genuinely enjoyed my 40 years of employment here at the county and will miss my coworkers when my retirement day comes. Please feel free to contact me if you need additional information. Sincerely, Duran J. Hammond, Budget Administrator. I made Duran come tonight. Is he here? Come on up here, Duran. I said this publicly at my state of the county. It cannot be understated the impact that Duran Hammond has had on county government. And some of the council folks have been around here a long time. Ron's been here twice. John, Bob've been here for a while. You cannot underestimate the man whose picture hangs out on the wall, Frank Flister, who's Ms. Zomba's predecessor, and Mr. Hammond ran this county for four decades. Your county executives came and went. I sat there for 10 years. The most I could get was occasionally a little bit of a cut in the fun balance. But they, they were in charge, and they truly were, and they're truly exemplars of what public servants should be. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to tell Duran how great he was. Although the cemeteries are filled with irreplaceable people, Duran Hammond is as close to being irreplaceable. We'll get by, because he's trained, he's trained some people in fiscal. He's identified some folks, and he's brought them along, and hopefully, they'll be moving up in the near future. But I wanted to give you an opportunity to say whatever you wanted to say to Duran. He doesn't like this, he doesn't want to party. He'll get a proclamation too eventually, so we're going to torture him a little bit right up until the time he goes. But I just wanted to, I wanted to tell you how gratified I am to be able to turn the microphone over to you right now, Duran. Come on up here.
I brought my budget book.
You have, you have five minutes.
That's all he gets for 40 years.
Go ahead, Duran, speak, please.
Wow, a little thinking back, I wasn't expecting this, but first of all, I'd like to thank you for your kind words. Today, you received your 2020 budget, and kind of appropriate. Forty years ago, when Marty Bechtel said, "Duran, we're going to prepare the 1980 budget", I said, "Okay". Needless to say, the budget in 1980 was about $40 million. Today, you received a budget that's $445 million. Yet, there's one thing that is the same. We're here to provide core function services, human services, courts, corrections, parks and recreation, and then the rest of us just support that. Back then, Mr. Bechtel said, "I want one page for my budget". So we compiled on the front page, something you're used to seeing, all the types of revenues and the expenditures, added up to $40 million. Flipped the paper over, listed every department and every division, the total amount of money they got. That was the 1980 budget presented to county council. We had one budget meeting. It wasn't even held in county council, it was held over in the training room. It lasted not even a half hour, and we were done. You have a 200-page document to read through
Thank you.
with all kinds of graphs and facts and figures and whatever else you might can imagine in there. But you can see today, what does Northampton County do. It provides the same core services, just on a much larger scale. So that is what I'll leave you with. To me, the budget is the most important document Fiscal Affairs provides to council, to the administration, because it's a financial plan that you're going to live with for the next 365 days. We had the opportunity, by the charter, at least twice to amend it. But basically, the budget that you adopt in the first week or second week of December is what you're going to live with throughout the next ensuing year. And so although it's been 40 years, it doesn't seem like 40 years, but I believe the product that we produced in Fiscal Affairs is the best we could.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to say, or Mr. Dees?
Well, I'd just like to thank you, especially on my first year here. You're always good to explain how the process worked and, you know, how to, what we could or couldn't do within the budget and everything. So I definitely want to thank you for your...
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mr. Kruze.
Yeah, and I can't imagine a budget hearing without you. Yeah, I think you answered all of my questions over the years, no matter how trivial. You always got back to me, very professional, nonpartisan. I strictly buy the numbers, and as a math teacher, I very much appreciate that. So thank you very much for all the work you've done. Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
I'll join John in saying the same thing. He always had the door open for all of us, which was always nice. I mean, Duran always could have locked the door when he saw us coming down the hall, and he didn't. And he knew we were going to ask a lot of questions that probably weren't exactly the way he wanted them formatted. But the open-door policy, to me, was amazing because we sat down, and he was always stable, consistent, stoic, reasonable. And he told us the truth if we thought we were venturing into the weeds or not, which I had a real appreciation for. And on a personal note, I know that I will miss you in all the things you do, but we may even end up golfing, depending on what day I get off too. I wanted to express my gratitude and everything for working us through as a council some of the hardest moments we had with that S-word and a few other things. So thank you again for your services and everything. So, thank you again for all your services and everything.
You're welcome.
I just gotta say that I've known Duran in my previous lives, on council and as a director. And I, I would have, just be repeating what's been said. Certainly, you're rare in that, and it's getting rarer, that it didn't matter who the executive was, the administration, and once you've been in government, county government a while, like any government, you realize there's what you hear and what you're told and what's going on. They don't, they're just not always exactly the same. And, you know, you have always been able, I thought, to cut through a lot of that. And I know people worry, I've heard over the years, "Well, I might lose my job," or "I could get this," or "I'll get treated terribly." It never seemed to bother you. I guess you did actually make yourself irreplaceable. But, but, and, and I want to say, you know, and you, not just when I was on council, but in, as a director, we'd have our meetings every year when we'd put this, these infamous budgets together, and we'd always agree. You would come in, and I'd be pushing, and you'd be letting me know what the boundaries were, and, and always giving me the bottom line. And I, I will be happy if I don't have to hear Gadsby down the road, but, but anyway. I just want to say, Duran, I've always found you to be informative and very helpful, and not pull any punches. You don't try to be slick. And that's a compliment, because in this business, there's far too much slick and not enough honesty sometimes, and just being direct and straightforward. So, and, and so I do appreciate that. And I just want you to know, from, from me, who's had a lot of interaction with you, I appreciate it, and hopefully, even though you are retired, you won't disregard my call if I should call you and have a question that is just burning, and I, I needed Duran Hammond to answer, or Duran Hammond's suggestion. But if you don't answer the phone, I understand that, too. I, I, you want to retire, get away, you want to get away. I wouldn't, I wouldn't blame you one bit after 40 years. So, anyway, thank you. I mean, I think I speak on behalf of everyone, and they've already spoken, but we look forward to seeing how it functions with your successors. But, I mean, honestly, you know, no hype. You are gonna have, there's some big shoes to fill, but I want to wish you the best. I really do. Thank you very much for all you've done for the county.
I'd like to thank all the members for this, the council for their kind words. I'm gonna be leaving you in good hands. You shouldn't miss a beat. And that's one of the things I was schooled in, you know? I wasn't one to, okay, I'm walking away with all the knowledge in between my ears, and you, you figure it out. That, that's not my style. And so, you will, you will continue on, and you never know. My name might appear before you someday if the executive finds it in his will and power that I might be appointed to a board or a commission, and you think my financial background will support that.
It might be all right.
Have you heard of the GPA? I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
GPA.
Well, I'll tell you what. I think I've seen about almost everything in 40 years, but you never know.
You never know. You never know.
So, again, I want to thank, thank you, the administration. I've enjoyed my 40 years here as an employee. You know, a lot of people say, "Oh, you're, you're counting down the days, the hours." No, I'm not. I enjoyed, or I wouldn't have been here for 40 years. I mean, that's, that's obvious. Again, thank you for everything, and if I can help in any which way I can, you know where I'm at.
Thank you. Thanks, Duran. Good luck.
It's like high noon.
You know, Mr. Executive, when you came up and said, "I received the letter of Mr. Barron," I thought it was from the Glendon Hotel, folks.
Didn't he tell them he was gonna tear that down? Speaking of that budget.
Yeah.
We, we sent you the proposed budget today.
Thank you.
It's, you know, some of the highlights are, we're not proposing a tax increase. We've reduced it by 5.6% over what we proposed last year, which I think is a nice savings for our folks. But that's not really what I want to talk, we're gonna have plenty of time to talk about the budget. I wanted to zero in on one particular aspect of it. Last, two, two weeks ago, when Brian Kokos here talking about the, the sort of mixed-use open space, environmentally sensitive farmland preservation projects that he's been working on, he said that he had, he had preserved 300 acres this year. I thought I heard him use that number, 300, and that is amazing. He's killing it. You're killing it. And that was with, you know, part of the $3 million investment you made last year. And we're proposing that you make another $3 million investment this year in, in the new budget for farmland, open space, and environmentally sensitive land. And, you know, Brian's doing a tremendous job with that money. He knows how to extend that money. He knows how to pair that money with the municipalities and their EITs, and he knows how to get DCNR grants and make our money grow and expand. Warehouse proliferation, nothing the county can do about it, except take as much land out of play as possible. And I know we talk about, you know, vernal pools and water, you know?
Bog turtles.
Wetlands and steep slopes, but guess what? If there's enough money to make it happen, it'll happen. So, the more, the more land we can take out of, out of play, the less warehouses we'll have. So, that, that's the point of the budget I wanted to, to point your attention to tonight. I need to explain myself. We voted yes yesterday for the transportation overall program. So, I didn't want to. I wanted to vote no. We would've been the lone no vote. I didn't think in the end it would be prudent for us to be working outside of the system. We did get $60 million more dollars into the program for Northampton County. So, there's 60 million now, on a percentage basis, like this is a $2.5 billion program, it's a very small percentage. But we did get 60 million additional dollars. We also got nine of your bridges in the program. So, that's an additional nine bridges that aren't part of the P3, that aren't covered by any other particular programs, or only partially covered. Your nine bridges are now on that transportation program. That's another reason why we did it. And finally, what pushed me over the top to vote yes was PennDOT has given us a verbal commitment to spend an additional $75 million in the mid-range to fix 191 and 22. Again, this doesn't take us terribly close to the equity we're looking for in transportation funding. It would probably only take us into the high 20, in terms of percentage, into the high 20s, low to mid 30s at most. So, we're, we're not achieving equity, but I don't think any of us think we can achieve equity in the funding overnight. This is just round one in the fight. And I didn't think taking us out of it, working outside of the system from the beginning of our fight, made a great deal of sense. With that said, the Planning Commission has, let me segue. The Planning Commission has married the, the master plan with the master transportation plan. It's now in the same document. That's going to be before you at some time later this fall. And I have to say, we've got the final draft. I don't know if you've received your copy of it. I sent a copy over to Linda today, in case you haven't received your copies for distribution. And what I would urge council to do is compare the final draft with, with the notes that the county submitted. We have, we have some concerns, especially with the change in the definition of conditional use. Remember, we identified that as a, it's a new category that presupposed taking 30,000 acres out of, out of development, but there were loopholes that you could drive a truck through, pun intended. So, we're, we're still very concerned about, the heading was changed on that definition, a sentence was added toward the end, but we're still very concerned about that. So, what I would say to council is, please compare what they've done in the final draft with our notes, and, and make your minds up about what you want to do with that plan. It's ultimately your decision. Last, last time we met, I think it was the ELU Committee, Ms. Pletchen was here from the Conservation District, and she had several complaints. And one of them was a sort of generalized complaint about the memorandum of understanding, not totally effectuated as writ. It caused me to start thinking, maybe it is time for us to consider a truly independent conservation district. Although the Conservation District employees get our benefits, they're in our pension system and derive some of the other benefits of employment with the county, we do not control the Conservation District. By statute, the Conservation District Board is independent. It's chosen independently. Our function is, mine, in a point, sending their appointments to you for confirmation is ministerial. We really don't have any discretion over it. I guess we could refuse to do it, but I could then see a mandamus action filed requiring us to do it, and, you know, we would ultimately have to do it. So, I'm thinking, based upon some of the things that Ms. Pletchen identified as problems for her, it might be time for us to start discussing them being completely independent. Other counties do have completely independent conservation districts, and as we go through the budget process, maybe we can talk more about that. And I believe that's all I have, except that, Mr. President, I suggest the need for an executive session due to an update on litigation and personnel issues.
All right. I'm going to call for an executive session for personnel issues. It is 7:10, and no, no paper, no notes.
No notes.
All right.
Right. And so, you know, what I would like is to be able to, I would, I would like to see how that's, like, a little bit, lower savings, and then, you know, that, that, so it kind of levels up. Make it look more than 35 there, or maybe even if you get it all down, save it for the, the, the 2000, the 2005, here.
Oh, wait a minute.
See, just like what?
Before we come back, if you want to get it, okay.
Well, you know, the numbers.
For ballpark, even if you're ballpark, you have a, you know, I'm looking at it for the, the price.
Oh, okay.
I'm basically gonna go with number.
Right. That's right. Okay.
How are you? Good.
Oh, yeah. I'm very good.
For the, the NESTO? Okay. So?
Yeah.
Okay. So, basically, there are two pools, like, in 2000, and 2005, you know, it was pretty , a couple places, like, and one, so, right now, it's 400, just, you know?
Just seem too good to be true. Too, 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 too.
But you would take your own.
Right.
That's why, yeah.
Sounds like a good book.
Probably.
Correction on the, the, the.
Yeah, so you had, you had, but that in 2018, I think, probably private, private.
Oh, that makes sense to me.
So, we had to, yeah.
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 Oh, here's one document that's all over.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you do for the, for the, so.
You don't, you don't, especially when I come in.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no.
I, I take this, so, I'll stay on that, make sure I can, just to, it was from, Brandon, somebody.
Get people to come, you know, get it, so we create opportunities for people to come.
Yes, that plans in, I was looking, they would be taking the tax yield, I'm trying to add 2%.
There is not a certain percentage. Usually, so it's 30,000 that they, they, well, that's why, I was, 400,000, that is on here, and we have to be, everybody cheering, every year, but there is all some, example this year.
Those are the kinds of projects.
And they're, they're from the smallest, like, 5,000 for, you know, a couple more dollars.
That happens, like, Friday, that's, not for a year, but they apply every year, and I believe, the historical society, actually, apply, again, it's, I've heard of that, well, it's, it's, it was deep, it used to be controller.
There's a lot of people in the hall.
You see all the different faces out there.
Yeah.
No, no, it's, so it's like, since the budget's public, let me show, it's showing you better, so in here, in the, in the budget, you'll see under, you know?
There's not really much here.
There are, okay.
And that's, you know, the language is cautious.
Okay.
2020, you have your maximum, you're, you're, but they're not giving, you know?
That makes sense.
Now, if you go into, you know, book, this is what council gets, so, and it's all, some people don't like, but in community economic development.
Good work.
Good work their life.
67 is, so if you look, go to page six.
Yeah.
I was just, how about you?
You can see, so like, 2020, a letter, hotel tax for tourists.
Yeah, I think, oh, I, I just, I see, 2000, you know, like, 2005.
You'll know it, so.
2020, well, yeah.
Unless you're, unless you're, you know, right.
Story percent, and now they also apply, right? Yeah, and, but they also apply for another, they're actually applying for, they're applying for something else as well, so while it's 5,000 less, they're also getting a whole ton of money. Might be the national. Yeah, I don't remember which one. No, you're welcome. And, and it's on page, so sixty, sixty seven and sixty eight. So you can see that this is where they would get the money from before. But you'll notice that.
I like what I do, whatever you know.
So as opposed to giving out.
But that's.
It's a little bit volatile as opposed to giving out.
Yeah.
The three hundred thousand. You were able to find balance.
Once you can't remember, it's like.
All this stuff we have, so we decided. It is. So basically. But again, this is all. And there's a.
Two or three hour drive. That's where at some point.
I got the. Yeah, it's better. I mean, I didn't even realize that there was going to be an executive session, so it's useful what we're doing. Yeah. Sometimes when I go to the Lehigh Valley, or Lehigh County Commissioners meeting, they do that beforehand. So when I'm getting there, they're already in it, so I, I realize it's happening, so it's kind of nice that it's.
How much is to do? What a different mindset.
So.
But she said. And I would say.
The case.
Do we really need?
See that I just. We got a little. And I was, how does, what's the best thing?
So you're.
Well. I'm surprised. New inspiration. Before that. Right, it was created.
Chocolate.
Well, they just. A couple of years now, three, four. It goes quicker than you think.
Tell me what they want. Whatever they.
I do manage. But just seeing like.
Budget one year.
Counties.
Then I was back as a. Why? Such financial challenges.
He did some consulting. When they went into the transition from the commissioner to the. To the whole. Well, I didn't. So. He was here for, he was here. And then these were. One more year and then you win. I was not trying to react. Three years. I'd have a job for three years. I agree with you that. But if we call. Now, I don't want to learn counting. I'm trying to figure. Sorry, I forgot he wasn't on the transition. And he says, I didn't think he'd do that.
So many. It's a process. I just get down that.
Actually.
Well, I knew that, I, I just knew that. Change would go and then.
I don't know how that's ever worked out.
That's. I didn't have that option.
Well, I don't think it was. Was it? I think it was. Or at one time it was down in. Because, because he knew John Stofler, some, John Stofler. I think it was something we had to down. He was something. He had something involved in the city down. He did. And I know he ran for. You mean again, Charlie Denna. He pulled me that. Really. It was originally. Yeah, like Charlie. And, but he, but he did. He's been a cop. I guess he ran as. But he liked, he liked. He was very into that. He didn't like all the other stuff. He liked. I, I don't think he was there that long. So he still. No, he. Either he lost, he was there for one term. Four years he was there, and then I think. It was one of those. Certain. There's a big swing in the chain. And he, right through, he was right. So if you're horrible, being like together with.
Oh.
But it was like a team party.
And he's not.
You're for that group.
The nice.
All right.
Oh, Chris. One, one.
All right, calling the, our meeting back to order with seven twenty nine. The executive session, we discussed pending litigation and personnel issues. All right, now, that was the executive report and our executive session. You're finished with your report? Okay. Uh, we go to old business. Is there any old business? I have none on the agenda. Okay, moving on, new business. First is the introduction of an ordinance entitled. An ordinance of the council of the county of Northampton, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the incurring of non electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed seventy five million dollars. Covenanting to pay and pledging all available taxing power of the local government unit for the payment of the bonds, authorizing the establishment of a sinking fund and the appointment of a sinking fund depository, fixing the form, maximum interest rates, maturity dates, and other provisions for the payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing of required documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, ratifying and directing certain actions of officers and making certain other covenants and provisions in respect of the bonds. Is there someone who would sponsor this ordinance? All right, Ms. Hefner, is there a second? Mr. McGee. The public hearing debate and possible vote will be at the October seventeenth meeting. All right. The second order is the consideration of bond council resolution. Mr. Werner, would you please introduce this?
It's underneath the. Yeah.
Just in the back of that big thing, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Now therefore be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the Director of Fiscal Affairs to hire the firm of Dinsmore and Shoal LLP to serve as a bond counsel for the two thousand nineteen general obligation bond issues. I apologize, I wasn't here at that meeting for some movement, but.
We knew.
I'm assuming it was, okay?
All right, thank you. Is there a discussion? Mr. Kusa.
Just a, a statement and then a question. Typically, I prefer that we hire a local law firm when we do this sort of business, but I think Mr. Barron, he did provide us with the numbers and this firm was significantly less than the, the, the local firm that we've typically dealt with. So I, I understand, I believe that's why you chose this outfit rather than a local one.
Mr. Barron, you want to come up to the podium?
Is that accurate or?
Yes, yes, it's accurate.
Wait, hold on, you may, hold on, hold on. Relish your time in the spotlight.
Okay, and, and then the other issue, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe the, the time to ask this is next week, but one of the things that was pointed out to me after the, the meeting we had at the last finance committee was that there was a mention of arbitrage as part of the, the documents as they were presented. I'm not familiar with how that i- is involved with refinancing. I've seen it when typically it's involved when we don't spend money and it sits in a bank account, I'm, I'm familiar with that, but why was arbitrage and specifically negative arbitrage listed in the presentation that we, we had previously?
So I'm glad Scott Shear is here, he can explain that too.
And I saw him there and that's why I brought that part up.
Would you introduce and, and give us his.
This is Scott Shear from AFM. He helped with our twenty nineteen bond issue, our previous twenty nineteen bond issue. And he's here to answer your questions, he presented the taxable bonds, he's here to answer your questions.
I've never seen you run so fast from a microphone.
Good, good evening, no, great, great question. Negative arbitrage, you're right, I mean, a lot of times arbitrage is used when you borrow new money for new capital projects, and that's where you're, you could be restricted as far as how much you're able to earn, what kind of interest rate you're able to earn on that money, sometimes you may be restricted to the interest rate that you borrowed. And so the positive arbitrage, if you earn more than your borrowed rate, it's negative arbitrage if you earn less. For refundings, especially this kind of refunding where it's called an advanced refunding, where we're more than ninety days away from a call date, when we purchase securities for that escrow, it's kind of the big picture concept of this transaction, if you move forward with it, is we'd sell bonds, say later this month, close maybe in November, then put the, all those proceeds minus the cost of issuance into an escrow to pay the debt service on the two thousand twelve Bs until the call date in two thousand and twenty-two. And so there's, again, the IRS has restrictions on how much that, those proceeds can earn in that escrow. So in a perfect world, there would be no negative arbitrage or positive arbitrage in that escrow, that means your, your borrowing rate and your investment rate in that escrow would be the same. Well, the negative art concept is that you're not, just because the, the world doesn't allow you to, the market's not there, that negative arbitrage means in a perfect world, you could earn a little bit more, but there's just not a market to do that. You have that ability, you have that room to do it, but the interest rates are, are such that they're too low for those investment earnings to actually get a little bit more. So some view that as a little bit of inefficiency, you know, I would say that's, that's probably right, because in a perfect world, again, there'd be no, no negative arbitrage, but that's just kind of a fact of difference between short term interest rates, which is what you're investing at in that escrow versus long term rates, which is what you're borrowing these, these proceeds at. That's something we watch very carefully, we'll have to buy the securities for that escrow, bond council's going to need to look at it closely, and we look at it closely to make sure we're not violating anything.
Yeah, because typically with new issuances, arbitrage is something we would hope to avoid.
That's right.
And I wasn't, I was surprised to see it, and it was brought to my attention as part of a refinancing. Is this normal or just because of the taxable nature of these bonds?
No, whenever you're doing an advanced refunding, the whole concept of negative arbitrage should be considered, it should just be looked at to make sure that it's not too inefficient, because at that point then may make more sense to wait a little bit longer until you get closer to the call date. So again, for any kind of advanced refunding, it's good to analyze that concept just to make sure, you know, again, it's still an efficient transaction overall.
Mr. Chairman, just, just, just one question if I may, and I, I may have missed something here, but when, when you did your presentation, did you talk about the aggregate principle of amount of seventy five million as a cap?
Uh, we didn't, I don't think we actually talked about a cap at that time, so this would be a parameters ordinance, kind of a not to exceed number. The actual size of the transaction that I think we talked about, that had in my numbers was about sixty six million.
Yes. I'm just, there was a, my, my feeling, I thought there was a discrepancy, that's all, is that?
Well, that was, that was intentional. So for these.
Intentional discrepancy.
It was intentional discrepancy.
Okay.
So I won't call it a discrepancy.
Play on, I'm, I'm listening.
It was an intentional number.
Yeah.
So, so for refunding transactions, and even sometimes for new money transactions, sometimes we, we don't do it as much, that, so say you, you move everything forward, October seventeenth, you approve the ordinance, then we would price the transaction a little bit after that. Based on how the bids come in, so we have, not only do we bid out bond counsel, you already have that selection, we also are bidding out underwriters as well, so those proposals come back in next Wednesday, so we'll be able to talk about those at your meeting on the sixteenth, I guess your, your finance meeting. But then all the paperwork will be filed with DCD, the, the state for their approval, and they have to look through that, and they have about twenty days or so to put their seal of approval on it. We always like to, on a refunding transaction, to overestimate the amount that goes into the ordinance. And so basically there'll be an ordinance before the state that shows seventy five million dollars, which is more than what we're going to need, a lot more than what we need, but it gives us structuring flexibility to still make sure we're following state mandates as far as how the county's overall debt needs to be, needs to be structured. And then after the transaction closes, so say sometime in November or December, then that's where your bond counsel will file an additional document with the state that basically says, the county approved an ordinance for seventy five million, but only issued sixty six million or whatever the case may be, eliminate that balance from the county's books, and then it's gone. So it's just a way for us to, for the finance team to have the flexibility, again, to make sure we're structuring this transaction. Legally, we cannot add any new money, this, this is solely for the refunding purpose only of the two thousand twelve B bonds. We can't even include any other refinancing the way the ordinance is written, so we can't include any other refinancing of any other debt, nor can we include borrowing any new money proceeds, it's solely to refund these two thousand twelve B bonds. But that, that additional amount just gives us the flexibility to structure the transaction according to, to state law.
Okay, I just, this is not a negative, I just wish we had heard that statement when we were reviewing things, because ten million dollars is a lot of money to say it's wiggle room, okay?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on council regarding resolutions? Mr. McGee?
Uh, just obviously taking this on, you, you would reasonably assume that we should be able to get a savings in, in redoing the bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you know, barring any crazy movements in the market.
Yeah.
Which we can't guarantee that, but if, if we do see some, some abnormal condition in the market, we'll postpone the transaction, put it on hold, you know, whatever the case may be until we hit a reasonable level. So just, we don't have to actually, if you pass the ordinance on October seventeenth, we don't have to price the transaction the very next day. I mean, I think just realistically, we won't even. I mean, I think just realistically, we won't even have everything ready until probably the week after. So then, if we see that the savings aren't meeting a good threshold, we're just gonna put the deal on hold. We'll keep communication open with the administration, they can relay it to you, or I can come back, explain to you as well, hey, the market moved in the wrong direction, and now does not produce the amount of savings we think is worthwhile, so let's just sit on it for a little bit, and hopefully it comes back, and if it doesn't come back, then, again, we just continue to monitor and watch.
Wait, hold, Mr. McGee's going to...
Yes, so I realize that, you know, we can, you know, hold back at any point, but just, I'll say before going in and paying your firm, and that, going into it, you reasonably think that we could have a savings?
Correct.
Yeah, didn't we...
Ms. Zarenski, and Mr., I'm sorry, McGee.
Just Phil.
Yeah, Phil.
Bill, I always refer to him as Bill, and I want to get proper.
Didn't we previously put a cap on, as like a safety net?
A floor.
Or a floor.
Yeah, and, you know, I think at that last meeting, we said we'd maybe talk about it at the upcoming meetings, and I don't know if today's the day, if you want to wait till the sixteenth or the seventeenth.
I think we'll wait, we'll wait for the ordinance itself.
Which is probably good, because by then, we'll have the underwriter RFPs, like I said, that come out next Wednesday.
Then we're gonna have the full-blown discussion.
So it'll be a little bit more fresh at that point, and then we can talk about what that floor should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be discussing the entire ordinance, so...
Well, I just thought we should be prepared.
I agree.
So that you're not getting till October seventeenth, and then trying to figure out what the floor is.
It's like the boy scout, oh, be prepared, motto.
I was a girl scout, I know.
Maybe fifteen seconds, just to sort of...
If you think it'll help understanding, go right ahead, you have the floor.
So the general rule of thumb for current period refunding, which that's the one, that's the kind where you're right at the call date, is as long as your savings are two percent of what you're refunding are greater, that's kind of that rule of thumb. For an advance refunding, GFOA rule of thumb is as long as your net saving, that's net of issuance cost, is at least three percent of what's being refunded. So if you're refunding ten million dollars of debt, three percent, three hundred thousand. For this transaction, given, you know, that we are doing it on a taxable basis, we could set a floor still for three percent, again, that's sort of the GFOA guidelines, as long as above three percent, that's fine. Or you may say, well, we want to be a little bit more conservative, maybe we want to set that a little bit higher, maybe it's three and a half percent, maybe it's four percent. So, you know, that's just maybe some food for thought until our next meeting, that two is for current period refunding, which this is not, so I would take that up. Three percent normally is for an advance refunding, which is what this is, so now it's more, do we want to just go with that general rule of thumb, or do we want to elevate it a little bit?
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McGee?
I was at the last meeting you had here, and I just wanted to, it's based on the ten-year long-term treasury, the rates we're kind of looking at?
It's a proxy, yeah, it gives you a general indication, I mean, the ten-year treasury, which is the one that we can all follow a lot on, on the dues and everything else, that correlates pretty closely to the municipal indices as well. But again, since this is a taxable transaction, this one's actually gonna correlate even a little bit closer to the ten-year treasury as well. You know, even if you're going to issue your own tax-exempt debt, like we did on the prior transaction, we still follow the ten-year treasury, but then you were borrowing on a tax-exempt basis, it's a little bit different, so I think that's a very, very good proxy to continue to monitor.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
So far, heading in the right direction.
You mentioned you'll be at the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Chair, will you be then also at the council meeting, the full council meeting on the seventeenth?
Correct, yes.
All right, and I think then that any questions that this generated, and when we, because I mean, if we pass the resolution tonight, and we don't pass a bond, well, it sort of makes this mute sound, you know? I guess the point is, we can get in, if any questions, he's gonna be here, you can ask more questions.
No, I would definitely be on the seventeenth, there's a good chance I will be here on the sixteenth, I'm coming from the western part of the state, but if not, one of my colleagues would be here.
Yeah, and the seventeenth is the big thing, I mean, I appreciate that.
It's on finance, right?
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, we've had our discussion. Any more discussion on this amongst ourselves? If not, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro. Peg?
You can come back to it.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarenski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusak?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Peg?
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm dear, I'm sorry.
Do you vote yes or no on this bond council resolution?
Yes, I don't care, yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. All right, now we have consideration of support of Jake Schwab Worker Safety Bill, House Bill ten eighty-two resolution. Mr. McGee, you have the floor.
Okay. Would you like me to read it all, or just the whereas?
However you want to do it, I'm gonna give you the discretion.
I don't think it takes too long to get through it. Whereas, the majority of the private sector workers in the United States are covered by the Health and Safety Regulation under the Occupational Health and Safety Administration, and whereas the number of workers killed on the job in the United States has declined from approximately fourteen thousand in nineteen seventy, when OSHA was created, to four thousand six hundred and seventy-four in two thousand and nine. Despite the fact that overall employment has more than doubled during that period, and whereas local and state government employees, including those in the county of Northampton, are generally not covered by the OSHA standard, even though they perform similar job functions and are exposed to similar risks as the private sector employees. And whereas the Jake Schwab Worker Safety Bill, House Bill number ten eighty-two, would extend protection similar to those provided for under OSHA to local and state government employees in Pennsylvania. At minimal cost to local governments, and whereas Jake Schwab has worked as a mechanic for the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority for twenty-seven years, when he was killed on the job by an exploding airbag, and whereas, at the time of his death, Jake Schwab was working on an unfamiliar bus from another agency, using tools that were inappropriate for the job because the proper tools were not available, and there had been no safety training in his garage for over nine years. And whereas Jake Schwab's death did not even warrant an OSHA investigation because he was a public employee. Whereas if Jake Schwab would have been covered under the OSHA, health and safety regulations may have prevented his untimely death, and whereas preventable deaths like Jake Schwab are particularly tragic, especially for the loved ones they leave behind. Whereas the public servants who have dedicated their careers to this community deserve the same health and safety protection as their colleagues in the private sector. Now therefore be it resolved, Northampton County Council urges Pennsylvania's General Assembly to support the Jake Schwab Worker Safety Bill, House Bill ten eighty-two. Be it further resolved by Northampton County Council that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to all members of the Pennsylvania Legislature serving Northampton County.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Mr. Kusak?
Yeah, real quick, you know, certainly I support worker health and safety, but I reached out to our statewide organization, and CCAP's platform specifically opposes this legislation, so, you know, my suggestion would be that the first step would be to try to get the platform changed, because if we were to do this, our lobbying, our lobbyist group, which is CCAP, would not be able to support this legislation in front of the General Assembly. So, you know, again, I'm for worker safety, absolutely, but I think that it's, a better procedure would be to try to change the statewide organization's platform first.
Any other, Mr. D?
Did they give any reason why they didn't oppose it, or they do oppose it, rather?
Well, I think the main one was cost, and having another agency involved, and, you know, public workers are covered under, you know, they're our responsibility. So I do believe that we should treat, you know, take, I mean, certainly we should, worker health and safety is of paramount importance, but, you know, bringing another organization into it, from particularly the federal level, they see that as a cost driver.
Mr. Warner?
I'm gonna say just the opposite here of what Mr. Kusak said, I think we should support this, showing our support as a council to it. Wouldn't be the first time we fought something that's come out of another group as a mandated program, and we should have, maybe. There's no such thing as a good mandated program, but the fact that CCAP disagrees with us, that's fine, I think we're supposed to disagree, but I believe we should stand behind this and support it fully. That's just my opinion.
Ms. Zarenski?
Well, I think we're an independent body, that we don't have to necessarily be dictated by CCAP, and I think worker safety is important. I don't believe that the cost of a person's life can be really much leveraged against the cost of what it might cause to administer a program like OSHA. I mean, I've worked in jobs where OSHA presided over, and sometimes it's a poster, sometimes it's a training, it doesn't take that much, it sounds like this guy just needed the right tools for the job, and that wasn't properly provided with the training. I think this is important to save a human life, and so I'm gonna vote for it.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Kusak, I will talk to the folks at CCAP, and I hope, I hope the majority of council supports this resolution tonight. I thought it was very, very important. I know, I know what our, I know what our function is here, I know sometimes resolutions, but this is our way of at least saying to the local legislators, you know, this is our feeling, and, you know, when somebody gets up and goes to work in the morning, and they say goodbye to their family, you know, you don't know if that's gonna be the last time. And one of the other mentions in CCAP's, I read the letter, and I appreciate you sending it to me, because I was not aware of that in two thousand seventeen, but, you know, what they said was, the regulation was another problem, but, you know, the whole soundbite of regulation, but, you know, proactive is important, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure, and I think, you know, I think this needs to carry on, at least here at the county, so, thank you.
I, yeah, I just want to say, Mr. McGee came to me with this and mentioned that he wanted to put the resolution forward, and I can only draw on my own experience, and I know to this day, I still hear people my age and some others complain about OSHA and some of these other government regulations, we don't need them anymore, everybody's enlightened, all employers are enlightened. I remember when I worked at the Cast Iron Foundry, for me, it was the summer, and I was in the grinding room. If you've ever seen a urinal, I was smoothing those down so they could be porcelainized. But anyway, I stood in front of a big three-foot grinding wheel for eight hours, and the way you, and if you ever had little metal filings, trust me, they can get everywhere, and I mean everywhere. The thing is, our protection was a pair of, we bought leather gloves, and what guys taught me was to take a handkerchief, the old-fashioned handkerchief, soak it in water, and tie it around like one of the old western bandits. And that's how it was, and I was able to leave at the end of the summer, and they weren't. It was their job. OSHA and laws like that changed that, and they actually got masks so that they could, you know, maybe protect their lungs a little bit. I mean, it was, it was, by the end of the working day, it was like a gray fog, because you had about eight men grinding, 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 grinding all day long. And so, I understand, I mean, CCAP and any other organization, sometimes our own bureaucracies get caught up in slowness, and I do, I will say this, it upsets me that government sometimes passes laws and regulations for the private sector, and they exempt themselves. I mean, the federal government does it, the state government does it, and we know there are things going on, and somehow, when you say, well, wait a minute, what about your employees? It's like, well, no, no, or what about you? We don't have to abide by that. And I think that, personally, I think that stinks, but I'm gonna support this because I don't see, I mean, if we're gonna talk about historic downtown Bethlehem and promising hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's nice, but I mean, that's not necessary. To me, things like this are necessary, and I think we have to drive the point home, and so absolutely, I'm behind you a hundred percent on this one. Okay? Anything else? Oh, go ahead, Mr. McGee.
Mr. Lot? Yeah, I'm very proud to support this, I, it's about time, I saw this about eight years ago, I came across some public workers, borough workers, working in a trench. The trench was about three foot above their heads, and I said, are you guys out of your minds? You know, people die every day with this, we would never do that in the private sector. The difference between the private sector and the public sector was OSHA. They said, we are not covered. I thought, you gotta be kidding me, that was the first time I was made aware of this, and I saw it firsthand, and I thought, our public workers are second-class citizens. We would never do that in a private setting, because our contractors would not, not any good contractor would never do that, because it would be fined by OSHA. So you need to set standards. The standard's not there for public workers. So I'm real happy to support this, and I think it's well overdue.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Warner?
Just a final statement, I think, you know, I respect CCAP for what they do, for many years, you know, as part of what they did, but just because they approve something doesn't mean we have to go along with it, and it's as simple as that. So if your, if you, if your heart tells you something, as Frank Flicer always used to say, go with what you feel good with, rather than going with the group, okay? Thank you.
Maybe we can be a driver of CCAP, who knows?
There you go.
All right, if there's no other discussion, a call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zarenski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusak?
No.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the agenda. Is there any other new business anyone would like to put forward? I would just like to remind everyone, we have our budget hearings coming up, so just refer to your calendar Ms. Zimbos sent out, the dates are set up, and the times, and there you go. So anyway, all right, we'll move on to council committee reports. Do we have council committee reports? Don't all raise your hands at once. Any council committee reports? Mr. McGee?
We had the Economic Development Committee today, and we, it was a very long committee, it lasted up until about twenty after six. We had the folks working on the United Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, and the World Heritage Committee, which is very important to the Lehigh Valley, we've made it to this list of prospective UNESCO sites, and they came in to give a report on it, and tell us about where they are with their grant funding, and they did a great job, and Charlene Donches Maynor, and Bruce, Bruce Haynes from Hotel Bethlehem. Thank you. Any questions? I think everybody was, just about everybody was here.
Any other committee reports?
No.
All right, how about liaison reports?
Yeah, there you go.
Ms. Zarenski?
Sorry, I was preemptive, I knew it was coming back. So I attended the Farmland Preservation Meeting, and I just want to remind everybody that the two-hundredth farm is being preserved in Moore Township on October twelfth, I believe, at noon. We were all invited to go, I will be there, county executive will be there.
Well, that's all the reason we need to go.
Apparently, there's some cake and cider, it's gonna be a big thing.
Cider?
Yeah.
Cider?
Cider.
Are you gonna have bathrooms? It's an old Pennsylvania Dutch joke. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's it, I'm done.
All right. I'm sorry, sorry. Any other liaison reports?
I just wanted to thank the nine-one-one administration for getting back and answering the questions that Bathborough had put it up, and I'd sent out, and then, I think everyone got the responses, so I just wanted to thank them.
Yeah, I saw, I wasn't here, but I saw, and I saw the responses, so.
Yeah.
Sounds, you're satisfied with that?
I mean, I am, and I, because I think they answered the questions, and I know that there was still some dialogue going on, then also with Bath and that, but I definitely wanted to, you know, thank them for, you know, answering it right away, and...
No, when we get into core county functions, you can't get, much core than that, so, all right, any, anything else? A goodie to order?
This weekend is garlic fest. There's the plug.
All right, is that their, is that their plug? Okay. All right. Counsel clerk's report?
Nothing.
Under for what? Go right ahead.
I just wanted to bring up to people's attention that it is, say, break the violence against domestic violence, it's domestic violence month.
Okay.
And there is a, the annual domestic violence vigil is Wednesday, October 16th at 6:00 PM, Third Street Alliance, so I think it's very important that.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Is there anything else to go to the order? Seeing none, council solicitors report?
Nothing.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Yes, second, we're adjourned.
Bye, Peg.
Bye, Peg.